And welcome to the regular meeting of the St. Peter School Board. It's Monday, December 18th, 6:30 PM in the Governor's Room at the St. Peter Community Center. First item is to call the meeting to order. If anyone is here and wishes to speak, please make sure you put your name on the card and get it to Ms. Janofsky. Let's start then with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no routine of justice for all.
All right, we need to consider and adopt the agenda, which can be found in the packets in front of you and also in our board book. There are copies in the back.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Agenda is adopted. Sarah, do we have any requests to speak?
No.
Thank you. This is fun. A truth and taxation presentation is the first thing on the agenda.
This is the annual truth and taxation. This is, and Megan's gonna cringe, what I call the Education Minnesota Super Bowl.
It is.
And our quarterback is at the table to walk us through the presentation.
Well, I will talk last but all the little people in the room. So, as was mentioned, this is our truth and taxation presentation. We are required to do this annually as the truth and taxation law suggests. So, as part of that, everyone receives a property tax statement from the county with the county tax statements for the city, county, and school district. We have to have this meeting and discuss all of that. We can discuss the proposed levies as well as review our 2324 budget, and then we have to have opportunity for the public to comment or question. So, this is our meeting to meet that criteria. So, the taxes are levied in the fall of 2023, and then they are collected in the calendar year 24. They are not considered revenue until fiscal year 25, so our school year 24, '25. So, it's sort of a multi-year process. Our school property taxes are determined first by the legislative bodies and the governors. They determine how much we're getting for different categories. They determine those equalization factors. Then the county assessor obviously goes around and looks at property values and assesses your properties. The school board can determine if we're gonna under levy for any categories, if we're going to levy for OPEP, if we're gonna levy for unemployment, those types of things. And then our voters obviously would determine if we're going to levy, if we're gonna have bonds or referendums. So, there's a number of different factors that go into our school property taxes. For the 23 pay 24 levy, our proposed levy that we are asking you to certify tonight is an increase of 7.13%, or $509,158 higher than last year. So, as you can see on the PowerPoint presentation, this is a graphical representation of the taxes that we've collected over the past number of years. So, later tonight, we will discuss the levy in more detail and sort of some of those, some of the reasonings behind that increase. If you look at, one of the biggest drivers of our increase is the increase to our market value as a community. As you can see, our market value increased by 17.4% across the state. The average was between 4% and 5%. So, we had a very high market value comparatively to other areas around the state. And that, in conjunction with our stagnant and our decreased student population, really drove up our levy amount. So, our property taxes are based on either referendum market value or net tax capacity. So, depending on the category, it could be calculated looking at different factors. So, some of the things referendum market value covers are the operating referendums, LOR, equity, and transition. That does not include certain pieces of land such as the ag properties and then seasonal rec. Net tax capacity is for pretty much everything else, and it's all parcels of property, but they're at different rates. If you look, our, both referendum market value and net tax capacity over the years has seen an increase. You'll notice in the calculation for this year, we have quite a significant jump, and then they had estimates already put together for next year that we would see another increase next year to those valuations. So, one of the examples that I wanted to provide just as a, as a calculation for the increase is referendum. So, we received $410 per adjusted pupil unit for our referendum. So, if you look at 22 pay 23, our referendum market value per resident pupil unit significantly increased. And one of the things that happens with the levy is that they use equalization factors. So, they try and make sure that the aid that is given to districts across the state is given more to proper, to school districts that have lower property wealth per pupil. We, because of our increased market values and our decreased student population, have higher referendum market value per pupil. So, if you see, if you look at 22 pay 23, our referendum revenue was $923,812. When they factor in the equalization, we get 85% of that through the levy and 15% of that through aid. Now, in 23 pay 24, because of our referendum market value per resident pupil unit, we're seeing that it's almost, it is exclusively collected in levy and none in aid. So, we're still generating the same, the revenue is still calculated the same way. It's just how that revenue is split. Is the state contributing any, or are we collecting it all from our taxpayers? So, on all of the categories that have the aid levy split, we either got less aid or no aid at all. So, that is, that is a huge factor in why our levy amount is increasing this year. For the levy that we are collecting, 53% of it goes to the general fund. So, that covers our general instruction, transportation, technology. 1.5% of it goes to community education for ECFE classes, comm ed, for school readiness, and 45% of it is the debt service for covering the bond payments. If you look at the general fund, like I said, these are the different categories that we receive. So, if you compare 22 to 23, you'll see the increases or decreases. So, one thing to keep in mind is that there is always two to three years of adjustments that are also factored into this. But, like I mentioned earlier, a huge, a huge explanation for the increase is because we are having to levy our taxpayers for many of these categories instead of receiving any aid on them. So, the comm ed, because they actually had a change in the formula, in the formula, that is receiving the same revenue, but they had the opposite effect. So, we actually, last year, didn't receive any aid for community education in the basic comm ed, and this year, we're receiving some aid. So, you'll see our dollar difference went down for community education. That's because we're receiving some aid in that top component. And then debt service is just based on our bond schedule, so that would be based on the payments that we have to make for that. So, this is just a five-year comparison of the split between general fund, comm ed, and debt service. Again, our total for this year, if we are to levy for the proposed amount, is $7,652,181 and a quarter. One thing that, so Baird and MRAA actually provided us with a number of these materials for our presentation. One thing that they had included that I thought was intriguing was just the general education formula, how much we get per pupil unit and how it is compared to inflation over the years. So, that is one of the reasons why a number of schools across the, across the state have to go out for operating referendums, because the expenses that we have to pay out every year are, are getting further and further away from the aid that we're generating per pupil. So, that was just something that I thought was intriguing, wanted to throw that in there. And then, like I said, tonight, later this evening, we are hoping that you will certify our levy for the $7.6 million. Again, like I mentioned, the other part that we have to discuss in our truth and taxation meeting is our 23, 24 school budget. So, if you look, we have a chart here. This is the 24 budget. The top is our revenues, the bottom is our expenses. So, we have it broken apart by fund. As you can see, our biggest driver is the general fund with $32.5 million in revenue and $32.3 million in expenses, and then it goes to the right from there. You can also see the revenue is broken out by source. So, $27.2 million of our revenue was generated through state aid, and the levy, which is what we're meeting on tonight, is just shy of $6.8 million. So, that's on the revenue side. On the expense side, again, our general fund is obviously the biggest driving component of our budget, and then salaries and benefits at $25 million makes up the biggest chunk of that, so this, our staff employees. This just breaks down the revenue that we have. This is a pie chart for the revenue by source, so this is all our funds together. Almost 71% of our revenue comes from state aid. The levy is 17.5%, and then we have federal aid and local sources that are also contributing. The next two are revenue and expenses by fund. So, first revenue, next expenses. You'll see that they both are pretty similar, the pie charts look pretty similar. General fund is 84% for revenues, expenses is 83.7%. Then our debt service is eight and a half, and eight and a half, and then goes down from there, food service, comm ed, and gifts and bequests, scholarships. So, the revenue and the expense side, the pie charts look very similar when you look at our budget. When we talk about the general fund, again, our biggest fund, obviously, of all of them, this is the breakdown of those expenses, first just numerically, and then the next page is by pie chart. So, like I mentioned earlier, salaries and fringe is obviously the biggest expense that we have in the general fund, followed by the various categories, for a total of $32.3 million. So, a lot of information, very, very high level. Last thing to remind you is that in 2015, obviously, we had the bonds for the high school. We passed off operating referendum in 2021, and then we had that bond refunding. So, this is the component that goes into some of our debt service. Are there any questions? Lot of slides went really fast, but...
I have one question.
Okay.
Food service.
Food service, okay.
We've run a positive in food service, and I see for FY '24 budget, you're projecting a deficit.
So, I think at the time, and this, this budget is based on what Tim Regner had put together, that was approved at the June board meeting, so I can't speak wholly to that. If I had to guess, I would say it was because of the unknown with the Minnesota, the legislator in feeding the students, because of our student debt in the past, and not knowing how that was gonna come into play and how that revenue was all gonna flesh out, I'm going to guess that that is why he had projected it that way.
Okay.
What has made our community market value go up so much? Like, I know that's not probably your job to know that, but I'm just curious, like...
Well, part of it is, you know, if you, you think about the number of buildings that have gone up, the apartment buildings that have gone up, new businesses in the area, as well as all of our properties being assessed higher, I think we've all seen that as well. So, the overall value of the community is based on that. And then, looking at the number of students that we have versus the value of our properties.
Well, I just found it interesting, though, that statewide, it was like 4% to 5%, but St. Peter was 14% or whatever. Do you want to be in?
Right.
So, that was why I was like, you know, just curious.
I looked at Mankato's just out of curiosity, too, and there's one by, I don't wanna say the number out loud, but it was a huge number. And I think about all of the, the new buildings that are going up in Mankato and having the same, you know, relatively the same number of students, they're facing the same thing.
I will say that part of the calculation, they build in a sales ratio, so they look at how much your homes are actually selling for versus how much they were assessed for. So, they do factor that in when they do the adjusted net tax capacity. So, if our homes are overvalued and they're not selling for as much, that, that does get adjusted out when they do the levy, the levy calculations.
I believe we're running at about 80%. So, valuations were 80% of that price that they're actually selling for.
Well, there's, there is a shortage rate of housing, which drives the price up, which increases the value.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Megan.
So, just before you go.
Thanks for coming on down here. That's provided from Ellers.
Right. So, what it's demonstrating to us is that inflation is far outpacing our funding sources.
Correct. Had, had the dollar amount that we got, that we received per adjusted pupil unit kept up with inflation, we would be receiving $1,282 more per pupil than we are currently receiving.
And we're not a business, and we can't be more efficient at making widgets and selling more to increase our revenues. Those are just assigned to us.
Well, and then, I mean, your, your widgets per se are your pupils, obviously. The more pupils you have, the more revenue you generate, but then you also have to get more teachers, that, I mean, it's just kind of a vicious cycle.
Yeah, yeah. Hmm. Yeah, that one worries me.
That's over 22 years.
Correct.
What you're saying, though, Drew, is there's just not a lot we can, we can do about that, is what you're saying. There's not like we can make an adjustment and like, we can, like a business might be able to change the production of, of a product to correct something. There's nothing huge to charge more for.
Yeah, our adjustments are to reduce our costs, and there's only one way to do that. Well, not just one way.
It seems like, no. It seems like in the past, we were lucky, where we had 10 years of growth, so our growth could cover that deficit, and we're asking our local district taxpayers to also fund that deficit, right?
Yeah.
Which is part of what you were saying today. So, it's just harder when our growth slows down, so...
And I think their MRAA's purpose, including that slide, was that they were, they were trying to help explain why a lot of districts have to go out for operating referendums to help make up that difference. So, ours is at $410. We're under the median for school districts across the state who do have an operating referendum, but there are, I mean, there are districts that have $0 for operating referendum, and districts have $3,000 per student. So, it varies greatly, but...
Yeah, thank you. All right, we need to, next, approve the consent agenda. Items in the consent agenda are in the board packet in our board book.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any items that we would like to discuss, any questions about the consent agenda?
I have a question on the donations for a $1,000 scholarship for a senior member of the instrumental music program. Where did that donation come from?
I am not sure, and Principal Engeldinger is not with us tonight, but I can get back to you with that answer, unless, you know, Megan?
Yeah, we don't want it to remain anonymous.
Thank you.
From the anonymous family.
Okay. I'll make sure we send them a thank you.
Thank you for the donation.
Yeah, right. Any other things to pull out or talk about with consent agenda? If not, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda is adopted.
This looks like a lot more exciting than what we just did, I guess. These are looking up.
Yeah, onto the good stuff. We have our student spotlight. We have South Elementary first graders Kenley Kidd and Gabe Swanson, Ms. Elke.
Actually, it's Gabe Swanson.
Swanson, I'm sorry.
Yep. And I am so excited to bring these first graders forward. Kenley, excuse me. Gabe is the son of Keith and Amanda Swanson, and he is in Mrs. York's first grade room. And Kenley is the daughter of Dalton and Kelsey Kidd, and she is in Mrs. Schultz's room. So, both of these students were nominated from, I asked staff to give me the names of students that they feel do a wonderful job of representing South, and especially our star pride, which is they're respectful, they're responsible, they're there learning and helping others in a safe manner. So, we're going to start by just sharing who we brought tonight. So, Kenley, why don't you start with us, of course? Who did you, who do you have in the audience?
My mom, my dad, and my brother.
And what's your brother's name?
Beckett.
Beckett, all right. And Gabe, who do you have? Who came with you? Here, we're gonna have your scoop right up here, so, and your sisters. You have two sisters, right? And what's the oldest sister's name?
Amanda.
And what's the sister closest to you? Wonderful, we're excited that they came with you. And we're, we met today and this morning. They were looking a little rough, and they were all a little clogged up. I said, you know what, they really are a fine representation. So, got a little pink eye, that was working its way out, so it's got the nose, the strap broke, and then we opened, so we were good. But we're trying to get everybody healthy for now. So, we're going to start with Kenley. Why don't you tell them a little bit of what we're focusing on with our character strong this month?
Gratitude.
That's what we did, and that was our last one, wasn't it? And what did you learn? What was gratitude? Did we talk about that one?
Being responsible.
Right. And so, and being happy for the things that you have and taking care of the things that you have, and recognizing that not everyone has those same things. Looking at the little things, right? And this month, we have a really long word that we're working on, do you remember what it is?
Empathy.
Empathy. Well, that's a hard one, and we probably didn't know what empathy meant before we started this, did we? But how would you sum that up now? What does empathy mean now? What about somebody else's shoes?
When somebody's not feeling the same way you are.
And so, you have to recognize how that other person is feeling in addition to how you're feeling. Did a great job, she used the phrase today, stepping in someone else's shoes, so you get an idea of what that other person might be feeling. Gabe told me a little bit today about an author that he was learning about in his classroom. Who, who is that author?
Hold on.
Yes, and what did you learn about the books that after studying? What did you learn about this one? What do they have in them? All the same.
Piggy down.
Who's the one that has lots of speech problems?
Pigeon.
Yes, how about pigeon, the sea bag?
Because most of them, sometimes when it's papers, they're all the books, they're not kind of easy to read.
So, they started to notice some patterns of the author put together in the books. When we talk about, what are some of the favorite things that you get to do at South?
Math.
Math, and what things are you learning about right now in math?
Um... Italian.
Okay, in the math corner, you do a lot of things in math, and you don't... How about you, Gabe? You taught me equations today. What are equations?
I think I can see some of the...
Yep, you have to figure out what the answer is, even addition or subtraction. All right, now, I want for you to think about, what do you want to be when you grow up? Kenley, what do you think you'd like to be?
A nurse practitioner.
What? Do you happen to know anyone who's a nurse practitioner?
My mom.
Say that's very specific.
What do you think nurse practitioners have to do?
Do botox.
That was a great question. I just wanted to cry today, but I went, wow. Because everyone needs to know a good nurse practitioner, you want to live your best. All right, we didn't dig into it because I thought the answer might change. Doctor Dixon, make sure you take that along to your way.
Yeah, I'll run it past, yeah.
And Gabe, what would you like to be when you grow up? Tell them why, for the South Jersey, I said, I just feel so happy to be that. Didn't you say you'd get to be a South Jersey? Just one few... Today, you told me you thought the car was pretty cool. Like the car, my goodness.
We did just get some...
And as, you may not know it, but we are down to the final four days of school, and Kenley, what are you going to do on the break?
Celebrate Christmas with my family.
Okay, and how about you, Gabe?
Celebrate Christmas with my family, hopefully eat cookies for the presents.
Okay, just relax a little bit. And they both looked rather smashing tonight, because it was pajama day here at South Jersey. Do you have any questions? They're the experts about South Jersey.
We're between a nurse practitioner and a police officer. We should be in pretty good shape.
And they would be wonderful at both. Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you so much for having us.
Good job, both of you.
I did take Gabe today, and I said, oh, it'll take about 10 minutes. He left the office, but that was way more than...
We went through a lot faster than you.
Thank you, Kenley and Gabe, good job. We do not, I believe, have student council reports.
We do not, they're at the band.
They are at the band council. All right, we are now, we will now move into our action items on the agenda. We have several. The first is to consider a resolution of certification of school district levy for taxes payable in 2024. Ms. Gracia is back.
Equally exciting information. All right, so there should have been three, four items in your board packet. The first was just a letter to Mr. Gronseth outlining some of the proposed dollar amount, as well as a few of the changes. One of them was the levy factor comparison. That was in the presentation earlier tonight with the market values, referendum market value, net tax capacity, et cetera, over the past number of years. One is a five-year comparison of the different, some, a summarized category for a general fund, both referendum market value and net tax capacity, comm ed, and debt service. It's not deb service, excuse me, it's debt service. You'll notice one of the big things is in 21 pay 22, that's when the operating referendum went through for the first time. So, there is a big increase there, and then this year, with the equalization, we have the big increase here at 7%. And then the last one is a very detailed by category presentation for the last number of years. So, with the information from earlier, our levy actually changed by $8 from this fall to now, so everything that held true in September holds true now, and we are asking that you certify the levy for $7,652,181.25 for pay 24. What questions do you have that I can answer?
Sorry, Tim was being distracting over here. I'm just teasing.
He's just trying to go up the bank.
I just had some blank pages, and Tim was helping me sort it out. Sorry.
We gotta take care of it.
We did. We did look a little distracted, and that was why.
All right. Do you have a question, or that was yours?
No.
Okay.
It did look like we were kind of, I just wanted to say that's what it was.
Gotcha.
No questions?
I'll move the resolution to certify the school district levy for taxes payable in 2024 of $7,652,181.25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the resolution. Any other discussion or questions? So, the resolution, as it reads, be it resolved by the school board of Independent School District Number 508, St. Peter, Minnesota, that the levy to be levied in 2023, to be collected in 2024, is set at $7,652,181.25. The clerk of the Independent School District 508 School Board is authorized to certify the proposed levy to the county auditors of Niklet and Lassure County, Minnesota. We have a motion and a second. We need to go around the table.
Aye.
Mr. Locan, care?
Aye.
Ms. Stewie?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 The resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. How about another resolution? How about that? This one, we need to consider a resolution establishing combined polling places.
This is a requirement every year.
This is a requirement every year for us to identify combined polling places. Uh, there's not a change to what is being recommended, that being Ward 1 at the National Guard Armory, Ward 2 at the Community Center, outside St. Peter limits in Niklet County. It would be at Johnson Hall, like it was this past fall. And then, um, outside St. Peter city limits in Lassure County would be at the Casota Community Center. So, not a change.
I still move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, so, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 508, State of Minnesota, and pursuant to appropriate statutes, um, that the polling places will be established in the city of St. Peter for elections in the calendar year 2024. Ward 1, Precinct 1 at the National Guard Armory on Switch Street. Ward 2, Precinct 1 at the Community Center, Door B. Um, and that the school district residents outside the city of St. Peter will vote in combined polling places previously designated by the school district. Outside St. Peter limits in Niklet County will vote at Johnson Hall, 400 Union Street. And outside of St. Peter city limits in Lassure County would vote at the Casota Community Center, 200 North Webster Street in Casota. We need to go around the table. Mr. Leonard?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it, the resolution is passed. Thank you. Next up, we need to consider a resolution authorizing the School Board and Administration to begin planning for the issuance of general obligation facilities maintenance bonds in calendar year 2024.
Yes, um, as we've been, um, in discussion, well, for over a year now, uh, regarding the middle school heating plants and HVAC systems, and the need for renewal of those. The boilers and much of the HVAC is original to the building, going back to 1958. And, uh, we've had many breakdowns and shutdowns, and the parts to, to repair these are no longer readily available. We end up looking on eBay and, uh, finding others that are being taken out of commission to be able to try to find parts. Uh, we've had very uneven heating and cooling in the building. Some classrooms, uh, are regularly 85 to 90 degrees on a daily basis, and others are closer to 55. And so, uh, it's hard to focus on teaching and learning when you're physically uncomfortable in that space. We also know that the amount of fresh air that is being brought into the building isn't up to industry standards. And just the, the overall look and feel of the middle school is important as well. You know, some of our, uh, areas in the building have not been renewed or, or changed since, since the building was original. And don't function necessarily very well as modern middle school classrooms, especially rooms that were designed for, uh, specific high school courses, like chemistry or physics, uh, when we're trying to teach other courses in those spaces. We have had, uh, several discussions as a school board. We've had study sessions, we've had presentations. We've gathered the, the middle school staff. I've presented to different community groups to get more feedback. And so far, things have been really positive. But I'd love for Principal Graff to speak to, um, kind of the needs of the, the middle school and how people are feeling.
Yeah, so I'm super excited to have this conversation with the board today. I'm in full support of the proposal, uh, that we're discussing tonight, because it really addresses the comfort, the aesthetics and the functionality of the building. Um, in terms of the comfort, replacing the HVAC system, uh, as Mr. Gronseth has said, uh, it's tired. And because it's tired, um, it's often loud, uh, it's inconsistent with its temperatures, uh, which leaves our rooms hot, cold and often stuffy. Um, so replacing that will, will really create, uh, an atmosphere that is conducive to, to teaching and learning. The second part of what we're talking about tonight, um, going into some of the functionality and the aesthetics. The functionality of the building, uh, the building's set up perfectly to do what it was designed to do, which was to teach a 1950's high school. Sometimes that's at odds with a 2020's, uh, middle school. Specifically, a couple of areas that come to mind are seventh and eighth grade science labs and our STEM lab. Uh, they have a lot of fixed, uh, stations, which sometimes prohibit or minimize our ability to be flexible in those spaces and use collaborative learning techniques. Uh, another piece of the functionality, many of our classrooms have one to two outlets, uh, which probably in the 1950's was, was great. Um, but for today's needs, it is vastly under what we need, specifically when, when all of our students have one-to-one devices. Uh, in addition, uh, the bringing on of the early childhood with our 2017, uh, reconfiguration. When we did that, it eliminated the use of one main stairwell for the middle school, because that main stairwell runs right through the, the early childhood. And for obvious reasons, we don't want our 600 students running through there. The proposal that we're talking about includes, um, the moving. You, you, we're going to move that stairwell, uh, to a different location, which creates another thoroughfare for our students. It makes our movement throughout the building more efficient, and it eliminates our fifth and sixth graders moving through seventh and eighth grade hallways while those classes are in session. So it eliminates some distractions. And then I want to talk just briefly, uh, about the aesthetics. So, when we go through or if we go through and remove our univents in every single classroom, there's gonna be a hole in the wall. And who knows what the tile looks like underneath those univents? The second part of the proposal that we're discussing tonight would include some funds to repair those areas in a way that's aesthetically pleasing, a, a way that our, our students can be proud of, uh, being in those classrooms. In addition to that, uh, our building serves early adolescent students. And kind of a benchmark or a milestone of early adolescence is building that community, finding that sense of self and identity. And we've worked really, really hard over the last few years, uh, since we've been a middle school, to build that sense of identity in the current location. Sometimes the physical state of the building is at odds with what we're trying to do. It very much looks and feels like the old high school. And the proposal, uh, that is before you provide some funds to modernize the look of the building, along with the functionality and the comfort. And in doing so, uh, we can hopefully create a space that, that we can call our own. Uh, and will increase that pride in that building, that sense of community, that belonging. And ultimately, we know all of those things, all of those words, um, equate to increased student achievement, which is really what we're after.
Thank you. The things that you're looking at tonight are in two resolutions. The first resolution is regarding the replacement of the boilers, the HVAC systems and some of the, the main infrastructure for indoor air quality. Excuse me. The, the district already has the levy authority it needs to be able to do this work under the indoor air quality, uh, piece of long-term facilities maintenance. The proposed price tag for that work is $23,325,000. The, the first resolution is taking the action necessary to move forward with addressing the HVAC boiler systems indoor air quality pieces. The second resolution that you are considering is, um, I want to get the number right, For this work, we do not have the levy authority that we need to complete this. We would need to move forward with a referendum, uh, a bonding referendum to do this work. That would involve, uh, a referendum vote to be held in April. And so, the community, uh, would hear about this project, uh, the needs around it, the reasons for, uh, making the effort to really improve the middle school for our community. You know, the middle school has been in operation for over 65 years and has been a hub of activity for our whole community, the center for learning for our community. And by investing in that now, while we are doing this HVAC work, uh, makes it more efficient, more effective and more cost-effective, uh, to do it at the same time. And that's why we're asking you to approve a resolution to go up for a referendum in April to fund, um, the other pieces of this work. So you have two resolutions before you. The first is actually taking the, the step to move forward with that project. And work would begin, uh, on planning that project as soon as, uh, holiday break, which is a, a week away. The other is moving forward with a referendum. So we would be starting our communication with the community regarding that referendum to be held in April to move forward with that work. This project would start in the fall of, uh, sorry, spring of 2025. So, the next spring. And would take, uh, what we're hoping is two summers to complete, possibly three summers, depending on what we find along the way. And so, that's what we're asking you tonight. Give you opportu, opportunity to jump in.
2025. Because the referendum, no, you said it right. She was clarifying.
Oh, yeah.
But the referendum would be spring of 2024.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, we would need ample time to develop all of the detailed plans, ordering, um, everything that we need. Some of it has quite a, a long waiting period.
That's what I was gonna say, I was gonna ask the question that I know people would ask, which would be, why not just get going? And the answer is, there's lots of planning and ordering and bid, bid process and that whole thing.
Exactly. So then, this spring would be all about developing all of those plans and, um, getting ready to go up for bids for this project.
Are there some things that can, I'm sorry, is there, are there some things that can be done theoretically if we approve this, if the referendum passes? Or if we approve this and we go forward with the heating and ventilation upgrades or fixes? Are there some things that can happen next summer to improve some of the conditions? Or is it just too much? Tracy, don't ask such a detailed question now.
Um, you know, we have been doing some small steps. If things are breaking down, we, we're doing our best to, um, get them to be operational without spending too much on it. But the project wouldn't start until after bids were taken.
I'm, I would like to move the resolution, uh, authorizing the School Board and Administration to begin planning for the, uh, issuance of general obligation facilities maintenance bonds in calendar year 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? I did want to add, uh, thank you, uh, for sharing information. I mean, I think we've, we've talked about this in a couple of different settings. And then also, the St. Peter Herald, there was a good sort of overview of the current state of the HVAC system and the boilers at the middle school. So I think that was helpful in terms of getting information out for people to consume about this, understanding the urgency of work that needs to be done.
How, how old is the current boiler?
Uh, 65.
It's a good run.
It's a good run.
If it were a teacher, it could retire with. Sorry. With no reduction in benefits.
It just, yeah, you need to hang in there.
Sorry, that was just.
So we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
It is hard to look at the, the price tag and probably know that the original building was probably built for less than that amount.
Well, that is a question that I have been asked multiple times. Why don't you just rip down the whole building and start over? And I said, that's actually been explored, but that is not cost-effective.
It was actually one of the first questions I asked. Knowing that, uh, some of the regulations with the state, but the replacement of this building would, uh, be in the range, if not more than $100 million.
Yeah. But I, I'm, I'm glad we brought that up, because that has been one of the first things that people say, just rip it down and start over. That actually was explored.
One of the, uh, presentations that I've had the opportunity to do, uh, about these projects, um, one of the, uh, audience members said, so you're asking us to spend $32 million to save us from spending over $100 million? Okay.
That's well put and should probably be stressed a lot in the next few months.
And for the amount of tuck pointing that has gone on in that building, it should be in pretty good shape. I would like to think.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Uh, so the resolution, um, would authorize the School Board and Administration to begin planning for the issuance of general obligation facilities maintenance bonds in calendar year 2024. The bonds are anticipated to be issued in an aggregate amount of not to exceed $23,325,000 to fund the costs of the projects included in the 10-year facility plan, which will be approved by the Board and the Commissioner of Education prior to the issuance of bonds. We need to go around the table. This is a resolution. Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Locan?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Resolution passes. Thank you. Next up, another resolution, calling for a special election.
This is part two that we've already discussed some of, but this is the work, the portion of work that we do not already have the levy authority for. So this is upgrading those spaces, like, um, Principal Graff spoke about. If we're going to take apart each room, we are hopeful that we can put it back together in a way that is aesthetically pleasing. Not just a, a patch over a hole in the wall. You know, it includes, uh, funding for new flooring, uh, to paint, to unify the building, to put that staircase in so that it improves the flow of the building and allows early childhood and middle school to have separate, uh, separate, separate flow, in the building. And, um, yeah, I don't know. I don't know what else, um, to say that we haven't already said, but.
Do we have an estimate of how much this would cost if, if we were just doing this on its own without the HVAC project? Because as you said, we're, we're ripping out everything, basically, to replace the HVAC that is failing. So, it's $10 million, but it's, if we were just doing this, it would be much more than $10 million, because we'd have to pay for the labor to take things apart that will be apart because of the HVAC project, so.
Right. You know, if we were doing this independently, like you said, you'd have to take it out to put it back in. So we're having some savings in, in that portion. I've not seen an estimate of what that would have been independently.
It's a savings.
Yep.
And it was demonstrated thoroughly, uh, to us, I don't know, you know. This is one of those things where, where we, we might not want to, um, ask for $10 million to do this, um, right now. But that's the opportunity we have right now. And, uh, it's the right way to do it. Yeah. In some ways, it's a bummer. Some, some ways, it's, it's great and it's the right thing to do, so.
Yeah, one of the things that I've been sharing is that, um, for 65 years, this has been a building that our community has been very proud of. And it has served the community well as a high school. And now, it is time for us to invest in this building to make sure that it continues to be a building, that everyone that teaches in it and learns in it and visits is, is proud of. Proud to have as an asset in our community. And making these investments ensures that it will be standing tall and proud for another 50 to 60 years.
Well, I think too, not to get lost is the fact that we, this community passed a referendum to do work on buildings and build that new high school. And, uh, a couple of years ago, we refinanced, uh, that commitment. And a couple of years ago, we refinanced that commitment to save taxpayers in this district about eight million dollars over the length of that. So the way school financing works, no, we just can't take that money and invest it in something else. The voters have to specifically approve it. But if you look at the big picture, the district is being pretty fiscally responsible and I think pretty proactive in making our buildings last as long as they do.
And to piggy, piggyback off that, we could certainly be looking at a lot more than ten million dollars in upgrades too. There's a lot of stuff in the building that we could upgrade that we are choosing not to at this time, just because of the price tag.
Entertain the motion.
I'll move that resolution to call for a special election.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? This is the resolution relating to the issuance of general obligation school building bonds and calling a special election thereon in an aggregate, to request an aggregate amount not to exceed ten million, nine hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of providing funds for the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including but not limited to classroom and facility upgrades, remodeling and renovations at the middle school. This, the ballot question would go to elector, to the public on Tuesday, April ninth, twenty twenty-four, at the combined polling places that we just approved a few minutes ago. So we have the, the motion and the second for that resolution. We need to go around the table. Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Wilkins Garrett.
Aye.
Ms. Stewie.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Kaut.
Aye.
Mr. Dixon.
Aye.
Ms. Martins.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the resolution passes. Thank you. Lots of work ahead.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The work to begin.
Yep. The fifth action item, consider approval of the world's best workforce report for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year.
This is an annual report that is required by the Minnesota Department of Education. We went over this report during our last study session as public sharing of this information. The reports have been put together, including world's best workforce and the achievement and integration progress report and has been submitted to the state. And it is now here for your official approval.
I feel we've done this a couple of times.
I know, because you had the annual report on student achievement.
We keep looking at the same report.
It is, it is the same information, but it is all required by the state. So each time we submit it to the state, you need to look at it again.
Make a motion to consider approval of the world's best workforce report for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, discussion?
I just want to say that there is a lot of conversation at the Department of Education and the legislature to reduce the number of reports that we have to provide, recognizing that we're submitting the same information several times in different ways.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the world's best workforce report for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have approved the world's best workforce report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last business item, action item, consider approval of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar.
So historically, we have looked at two, two years of calendars at a time. This year is a little bit unique with all of the legislative changes that were made in the last session. There are a lot of requirements for staff development and staff training in several categories, the REED Act being the, the most significant one. They're still working on the details of what that training looks like. And, excuse me. I'll make it through, I promise.
Getting emotional.
Getting all choked up.
It's a big deal.
So the, we don't have the details of what that training is going to look like, and it may affect the next calendar. And we may have to build in more staff development when we have the details of that. So we didn't want to bring you two years. We are bringing you one, one year, next year. We did review it at the study session. We did gather input. We brought it to the teachers' union for a review as well. And since our meeting, we discovered that when we had made some changes, we hadn't shifted the end of quarters to match the number of days in those quarters. So there is a difference between what is in front of you tonight and what you reviewed at the study session, only in the fact that the end of each quarter is shifted slightly to make the quarters more even.
I'll make motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So the first quarter now is ending on Halloween.
It is. So there's an early release on Halloween, and it's a teacher work day the day after.
I would think the staff would love that.
It did bring about some smiles.
Yeah.
That's a very, very fortunate timing.
Also, I think going to one year might be prudent for the next few years based on construction and having the flexibility to alter start and end times and so forth.
Good point.
With that being said, do we usually kind of approve it by this time for like the next school year so people can kind of, kind of sort of plan on that?
Typically, typically it's been in January, but we had it ready. So we brought it a month early. I have had a, a few requests from parents who are trying to plan a year ahead for a vacation.
Go, parents. I don't even know what I'm having for supper.
Tell them July is good.
I know for, yeah, I, I don't.
Wow, that's awesome.
You know, you can buy tickets that far in advance.
Yeah.
My tracker app's going.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have approved the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school calendar. Thank you. We will now move into our information items. First up is the Native American Parent Advisory Committee update.
Getting a little ahead of themselves there. Shar, thank you.
Way to stay. Mr. Doherty was seated.
Tonight, we are joined by Charmaine Claw, who serves the district in, in a few different roles.
Yeah.
Tonight's role is as former, former chair of the Native American Parent Advisory Committee and as Native American liaison, serving our Native American students and families here with an update regarding NAIPAC.
Okay.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Charmaine Claw. I have been a liaison since March two thousand twenty-three this year. When I came, I was just a chairperson. I have, I myself have three kids in this school district. So and coming from a different school district, I had like some experience, somewhat experience of what to expect NAIPAC role and taking a liaison position. I kind of really didn't know what I was getting to, well, a little bit. But my main focus was the students, all Native American students. St. Peter's School District serves twenty-four students this year. And I'm crossing my fingers with a little, a little, like a little change in how we identify our Native American students. We will have maybe, I, my guess is probably about eight more. Don't quote me, but maybe I'm looking at thirty-two students next year. So with that said, our funding will go up next year with twenty-four. And the new legis, legislation that passed this year, that passes like forty thousand with our additional students this year, brings us to forty-two thousand that the American Indian aid helps with students. This year, different as liaison with those twenty-four students. I serve K through twelve and also the alternative school in Rockland. And I oversee attendance and progress and just monitoring their academics. Also new this year, I started groups. First, I'm, I worked with the high school and the middle school I started last month. And I'm still working on a way to start North Elementary as we're still kind of, I'm, I'm still waiting on funding of like what to bring cultural, what cultural activities I can order and stuff. So I'm at that level right there, but I'm hoping, hoping to educate them more on their native culture, history, and a lot of them are more interested in their arts. So I'm hoping I could bring that to the elementary level. With that said, that is what I do as a liaison. This year, as NAIPAC, as of last week, I resigned as a chairperson. But I, I think being with NAIPAC, we've accomplished a lot again this year, just building community, developing community education more on Native American. Our startup was at the Niccolat County Fair where our, our TP was set up. Our TP was purchased in May two thousand twenty-three with last year's funding. And that was a good turnout, and we had so many questions. And the team was there like for three days, educating community members. And a lot of parents were from the school district and they, they didn't know about the program of NAIPAC and what we offer. So there was a good education for our community as a good start. Last year we did, but there was no TP. So a lot of, just a lot of people just walked by last year. But now visually seeing the TP broaden a lot of, lot of ongoing lookers, I guess. Also, we did the Indigenous Walk, again, another success this year, a lot more community members. Also with the collaboration with Good Neighborhood Diversity, that was a success. And with that, the next following month in November, at the high school, we did the Indigenous Joy Celebration, and that brought in twelve Native American presenters. And with the half a day schedule, it was like a little, I don't know, like a little opportunity of Native American education for all the students at the high school level. And I thought that was a good turnout. And other than that, I think that's all.
I just want to say that Charmaine does an amazing job as a liaison and builds such great relationships with our students and families and provides opportunities that are really a model for our other liaisons as well and has done an amazing job as chair. Did not resign by choice. When we provided the state with our documentation and one of these reports, they noted that Charmaine also works as a paraprofessional with us in the early childhood and as a district employee was not allowed to be chair. And so she had to step down, but promises she will stay involved and, and continue working with the chair and making sure that all these amazing events and opportunities continue to happen. And I, I wouldn't want it any other way than having you very much involved.
Yes. I forgot to mention that NAIPAC, me first starting, I think there was only four. Then last year was six. This year we have nine. Yeah, now we have nine. And I've noticed become, after becoming a liaison, I see more involvement from Native American families. They just have not come to the NAIPAC meetings, but I visually see them. And recently, last week, we had a Native American, like a TP ginger, gingerbread TP making. And like, I think it was three parents that we'd never seen in this school actually came and participated, and like four additional kids came. So we're improving slowly, but we are improving. So I'm very grateful for that, and that's a huge accomplishment on my part. So thank you.
If you look at those percentages, if Mr. Graff had that much percentage of his parents show up for like a parent event, he'd be in a whole lot of trouble. So I think you did pretty good.
Thank you.
I, I heard rave reviews from my kids about the events at the high school, and normally I hear nothing from them. So it was definitely a high rate, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here. And now.
Now you guys.
The long-awaited building reports for the principal.
Good to see everybody tonight. For early childhood, we are clicking right along. Lots of high energy in these last couple of weeks, but no snow, so that keeps things a little bit more level. Wanted to share that the week of December eleventh, about six members from our early childhood special education team went to a national conference that was held in Minneapolis, the Division of Early Childhood for Young Children with Disabilities and Their Families. And it was just a really great opportunity. National conferences don't come our way all that often. And so we were able to send myself and five others to the conference, really, really good reviews from the people, the teachers who participated. Some of the focuses were inclusion, trauma-informed instruction, as well as social emotional learning, which of course ties into one of our focus areas for this year and our character strong and building on that for our preschoolers. So that was a really good experience. And then just also, it's going to be January soon. Our new brochure will be out from Community Ed with our early childhood family education offerings, so that'll be exciting. And then we start planning for fall of twenty-four with our open house coming up soon for school readiness and preschool registration. So we just keep rolling.
All right, well, we do not have any snow at South either. So however, it is not stopping us from celebrating our winter solstice on Thursday. Last year, we really made the move, part of the BLT and the, and the group of teachers to really try to provide a more inclusive type of celebration. So really tried to get away from celebrating the Christmas piece with the gift giving and all of those pieces and, and just sometimes the hardships that it puts onto families. So we created the Winter Solstice Day, and we do everything from math activities to literacy to, there's a dance party. If you'd like to swing by the media center, we have glow-in-the-dark necklaces that will be available. So there's some snow modeling that they do. We make our own snow there. We're magical like that at South. And it's just really, Emily Craig helps put together a special snack for us, and it really is just a fun way for us to close out the school year, and we look forward to it. Last year, we were able to get a blizzard on that day. So we were able to hurry and get all of our activities in in the morning because I think we released around eleven or eleven-thirty last year on that day. So this take, this year, we're hoping to go at a little bit slower pace. So the forecast looks good.
So the South Hill isn't too fast this year.
Slows it down the grass.
It's a little slow going down the hill. It's not as fun. Greetings from North Elementary School. Going through my list here, it's, this is definitely a focus on what kids are doing at North right now. I couldn't be more proud of them. Here's, here's quite the list. I've talked about our kindness crew a couple of times. And our spotlight students for South, we're talking about empathy being the, the theme of this month, and, and that's what's going on at North as well. But I got a chance to listen to some of our kindness crew members lead these lessons in the classroom. And there's two to three kindness crew members that come through and they'll teach one lesson to other homerooms throughout the month. And we have some, we have some teachers in training for sure. And we have some, we have some teachers in training, for sure. I mean, I've seen some fourth graders just take over some second grade classrooms. Like, all right, partner up, people. We're going to talk about empathy. I mean, they, there was no fear, and boy, the kids, as far as listening to their older students in the, in the building, boy, they were just glued on them. So I, again, like as far as teaching goes, students leading students is just one of the most impactful strategies possible. And I get to see that in action. Also, our, we have a giving tree that goes on. I think we've had it go on about three, three years now. Just when you come inside the fir, the door number one at North in that front hallway by the gym, there's a tree up all year. It's modeled after Shel Silverstein's book. And there's just apples and stuff on it all the time with things that families need. And at this time of the year, our student council kind of takes that over, and there, our community response, that was huge. We had over 320 items donated. And then our student council advisor, Mandy Kennedy, kind of helps the student council members get that all organized and invite families needing certain things in the shop. No questions asked, and then get it set up in the conference room. And that was hugely attended, and then there were still a lot of items left over that the community didn't need. And I don't know if you've ever heard of those Bombas socks. I mean, they're awesome. I have a couple there. They're super comfy. Mrs. Kennedy and the student council members rode, I, I think they just filled out an application. They got 100, no, like, I think it was like 120 pairs of those donated, and they're nice socks. And there were still about 80 left over, so they went down a group room, took, took the leftover socks and donated them to Union Street Place in town here, which they were really thankful for. So there's some more student service in action. And then the last one is, is our spring play has been announced, and kids are pumped up about it. They're going to try the Jungle Book this spring. So it's, the flyers are out in the hallway, and, and all the kids are, yep, ready to go. They're like, hands rubbing together, getting ready to get that. As soon as we come back from break, I believe the practicing will begin, and anybody's invited to do that, second, third, and fourth graders.
Superintendent Granseth.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know we were doing waves. Didn't know we had round two. I'm sorry.
You already got what you came for, right? I can go first. In alternative programs, we are really excited. We have a handful of fifth-year seniors that are going to be finishing up in January. So I was over there today, and one of them was sharing their countdown, so that's really exciting. We had seven fifth-year seniors come into Rock Bend this year, which is the highest we've had in a while, and most of them will be graduating, so it's, it's really been cool. And then on the flip side, we have lots of referrals coming in, so I'm glad those students are finishing. So we've got room for the next round of kids that are in need of credit recovery. Our first session of after-school credit recovery is wrapping up. Over 50% of our students that started with us have already finished, which is great. We still have two nights left for the, for the remaining students, but it's been a, a good session for getting kids their credit. And then I know everyone has kind of mentioned Character Strong, but I've had the privilege of walking through at all buildings and seeing what's going on, going around with the principals. And I just want to give a shout out and a thank you to our teachers, because they have really done a nice job implementing that program, and the kids are really on board with it as well. So just wanted to share that with all of you. If you see teachers, thank them for their work on that.
Okay, and at the middle school, very busy time, fun times. We've got winter concerts going on, one tonight. And then the last one, last of four, is tomorrow with our fifth and sixth grade band. Projects for teens visit our seventh grade students last week. They talked about the risks of vaping and the difference between an upstander and a bystander. Our student council has been very, very busy over the last two weeks. Last week, all of our advisories participated in gingerbread housemaking, and the students voted on the winner. The winner, the overall winner, the most votes, was Alex Rivers' homeroom. The students recreated Arrowhead Stadium and Taylor Swift's Eras Tour out of gingerbread. It was awesome. It was really cool. Student Council also hosted the annual Hot Chocolate Fridays this month. Every student is welcomed at the door with a hot chocolate. Winter dress-up days this week. Today was Dress Like a Teacher, if you're a student, and teachers dress like students. And as you can imagine, a lot more participation on the teacher's side today. And then we have our first dance, hosted by student council in early January. And then lastly, just a highlight of some activities. Our theater crew is underway diligently creating the set for this year's production. And then if you remember, I think last year was the first year we've split middle school girls and boys basketball this season into two, kind of followed suit with area schools. So our girls' basketball season actually wraps up this week, and our boys start after break.
Thank you. Is there a third wave of updates?
Just me.
Okay. Superintendent Granseth.
I just want to echo the amazing events that have been going on kind of all month, and have had the opportunity to visit many of them. And I have to say that they're just such a wonderful showcase of our student talent, but also reflective of the engagement our teachers are, are getting from students in the areas of the arts, be it plays, or instruments, or voices. It's just a great opportunity for the community to come out and witness that. I do want to say that, you know, I keep talking about weather preparedness. We haven't actually had like bad weather yet, but today, although it did not look like winter, began to feel like winter. And I just want to remind people that when it does snow or get icy, to be watching for our students out there. And please drive carefully. And always a reminder, when that school bus stop sign is out, please stop and watch and wait for the students. It just, I, I cringe whenever I get a call, and I get them far too often, about cars that are going around buses that have that stop arm out. So I just plead with everyone to, to heed that stop sign and watch for the flashing lights on our buses. I also want to thank you for moving forward with the, the Middle School and Early Childhood Center project. It is a big step for our community. I know that it is a big financial obligation, but I do believe that it is what we need to bring the, the building forward and for it to continue to stand tall for, for our community and continue to be just that hub of activity in our community, just right in the center of town. So thank you for that. I would also be remiss not to thank Directors Leonard and Director Lokensgard for their service to the, to the school board. You know, they were on the school board when I came to the district and have been very helpful and very supportive through what was, I don't know, the, the toughest three years of my career with COVID and taking on a, a new challenge with the district. And I'm so thankful that I did, and so thankful for your service to the school board and for your support for me personally. I really appreciate it.
For the board updates, I will continue with recognizing Director Leonard and Director Lokensgard and expressing, I think I speak for all of us, our appreciation for the service. Like 16 years and eight years on the board, easing into now school board retirement. Enjoy the good life. But to echo Superintendent Granseth, I, you know, just grateful for the consistency, the insight, the commitment you have to the district and the community. I was going to say the good humor you bring, but it's just okay humor. So we are excited, of course, for Mr. Rosso and Ms. Rosbach to join us, but you will be deeply missed. And you, thank you for your commitment to the district and to the community.
We do have a small token of appreciation.
Look at that.
What?
Maybe you got a gift when you left.
Yes.
I think I have done the right way.
So around the table. Wait, let's end with you guys.
I too want to say thank you and congratulations on the jobs that you've done. We will miss you. The wisdom and the jokes, what the heck, yeah, and the insights, both of you. Thank you very much.
Yes, it's been a pleasure. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your service.
Tim, you're not done yet, so you've got, you've got one more meeting. Wrap up another Baster agreement. That would be nice. I did attend the MSBA Delegate Assembly the first weekend in December. It was a very informational event. The boys all spoke to the group on Friday night, contributed a lot of worthwhile information. We had 23 resolutions. Eleven of them, 11 of them passed just on voice vote. Three of them passed with a division of the House, so they're, and they weren't close at all, so. The individuals voting against them must just have screamed louder than usual. Six failed on voice vote, two failed for a lack of a second, and one was withdrawn from that. And if you want to know more information about the various resolutions and so forth, feel free to talk to me. It's kind of interesting. Some of them seem to be very good resolutions, but they failed because some people seem to want to talk about local control, but then they ask the legislature to do things for them. And so we, we have to remind them that you got to be careful what you wish for. They shouldn't have been needing reminding after last session, but we did. So also, from our area, we have two vacant spots, so if anyone's interested in getting involved, put your name in. You can get appointed easily.
I'll keep that in mind.
Tim, Ben?
Hello, not ill.
Yeah, I'll just kind of say what everybody else said. But, you know, I started in January of 2020, which, you know, COVID happened right after that. So I know it was some tough times at first and hard to start on a board when we were all meeting via screens, but I feel like we all kind of came together in the end. And whoever you put next to me, just make sure that they share mints, because that's Ben-Tim's job at every meeting, however many mints that he has. He's always shoved a couple extra down to me. I'll miss you guys, so that's all I got.
I'll go first, Ben, since you're much senior than I am on the board. I just, first off, I want to thank all of you guys. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve the St. Peter community. This, it, it certainly doesn't go lightly. It's not a glamorous job. And, and it's really not a job. It, it, it is who you work with. Yeah, it, it's been a rough ride at times, but I certainly appreciate all of those who came before me and mentored me when I first came on and are no longer on the board. But I, again, it's been an honor and a privilege, and I appreciate everybody. Thanks. All yours. Grab some jokes.
I just, it's been an honor to be on the school board, and I appreciate all of you, and thank you for your service and your time and your commitment to the district. And it's, it's pretty easy to watch the news and get depressed. It's pretty easy to read some of those graphs and be depressed. But I think education in Minnesota is strong, and education in this district is strong. And look forward to hearing about your successes from home on Monday nights, so thank you.
You don't bring up a good point. Just a loud.
Yeah, sure. It's a free-for-all at this point.
It, it's really great to see the enthusiasm that the community brings towards the public schools. We certainly aren't lacking for candidates when the positions come up. You have two great ones coming on board, Ken and Rita. And, you know, continue to keep that passion. Just remember that there's always many different sides to a story, so do your research before you get all warmed up. Thank you.
Stencil that in a well.
I'm done now.
Anybody rebuttal?
Taking down that quote. Do your research.
So we do have some meetings coming up. Tim and the HR committee on Thursday, December 21st, 4:00 p.m., in the St. Peter Middle School Conference Room. Our organizational meeting of the board, Monday, January 8th, 6:00 p.m., in the Governor's Room. Business commuting, business committee meeting will be Wednesday, January 10th, at 4:00 p.m. in the district office. And then our next regular board meeting will be Thursday, January 18th, due to the MLK holiday, at 6:30 p.m. right here in the Governor's Room.
And our MSBA conference dates are, what again?
January 11th, 11 and 12? Yep.
And is the organizational meeting at 6:00 p.m., not 6:30?
Yes.
Okay.
And we need to be out of here, because the city has their meeting. It's that one that like.
It's the quick one.
Yeah, but we have to hold it that day, so.
Okay, just making sure, because it's set at a different time, so I just wanted to clarify.
We'll send out reminders.
They're good. See if we can do it. Get out of here.
All right. We'll allow you all, both the honors, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We should have voted no.
We should have voted no.
I dissent.